Good morning, Commissioner Howell. Can you hear us?
Test, test.
Did you see it was 1:30? Yeah, because Megan was texting me at 2:00 when I got up with Connor. I was like, what are you doing?
Odyan, mic check. Commissioner Lopez, mic check.
Tom Cruise.
Commissioner Dennis, mic check. Justin Wagner, mic check. County Clerk, mic check. Tom Stoll's, mic check.
Good morning, Commissioners. Making sure you can hear us.
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you see me?
No, sir.
From my phone. All right, hold on. Figure it out.
I hope Lindsay's enjoying this.
Did you hear that?
Yes, sir.
He's a potato floating around.
Do you guys remember the old people?
Yeah.
The older, they really struggled with like, did they ever hear about that professor?
Who is Justice Matano?
I was like a cat baby.
That was a lawyer.
One minute. Thirty seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six.
Well, good morning. Welcome, everybody. We're glad you're joining us. I want to welcome specifically those joining us online, those on our social media platforms, Facebook and YouTube, and all of you bright and shiny faces that we have in person today. We're glad you're here. I want to make note early that although you just see three Commissioners here today, we do have Commissioner Meitzner and Commissioner Howell. Both are joining us virtually today due to some previous commitments. But they are here, so we certainly do have a quorum. Just running through the order of business today, we have a couple wonderful proclamations. After we do the proclamations, we'll take a little bit of time off and run out and take some pictures to celebrate those proclamations. We're also going to continue a rezoning case that we heard all public comment last week, so there'll be no more public comment on that rezoning case. I'll remind us when we get to that agenda item. We'll bring all the discussion to the bench, and then we'll be able to vote after a motion is made. So it'll be a good meeting. Looking forward to it and glad everybody's here today. So I'll officially call the meeting to order for Wednesday, November 20th, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be led by moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Starting this week, Public Works is beginning construction to widen the shoulders of Ridge Road and to lessen the slope of the ditches from 53rd Street North to 69th Street. The project is expected to last until late spring 2025, and drivers need to expect detours and delays and plan accordingly. The first phase of work starts this week, and it will affect Ridge Road from 61st Street North to 69th. During the construction work hours from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, traffic will be down to a single lane led by a pilot car and a staff with flags. When construction is not active, Ridge Road will be open to two-way traffic with reduced speeds and lane widths. Thanks again for your patience as we work to improve travel safety for citizens. Sedgwick County Fire District 1 wants you to enjoy a safe and delicious Thanksgiving. Every year, the idea of a juicy, deep-fried turkey tempts many home cooks to try it themselves, but this method can be extremely dangerous. Here's a quick video on important safety tips for safely deep frying your bird.
What will the holidays be without turkey? If you plan to deep fry your bird this year, do it safely.
Our home was nearly destroyed by a deep fryer that was on our deck.
Fries can be very dangerous if not used properly.
Sedgwick County firefighters offer these precautions. Make sure your fry pot is at least twice as big as your turkey. So a 12- to 15-pound bird needs a 30- to 34-quart pot. Determine how much oil you need by doing a test run first with water. Put your turkey in and measure how much water it takes to cover the bird by an inch. Mark that on the pot as your oil fill line. When you're ready to cook, find a spot for the fryer outside, away from buildings, vehicles, and trees. Never deep fry under a carport or canopy. Make sure your turkey is completely thawed and dried. Even ice crystals in the cavity could make the hot oil pop and splatter. Turn the burner off before slowly lowering the turkey into the oil with a hood. Keep a fire extinguisher close and monitor the turkey the entire time it's cooking. Do not go back in the house. If the oil ever starts to smoke or burn, turn the fryer off. Follow these guidelines to protect your home and family.
We want everybody to have a safe and happy holiday season this year.
And last but not least, Sedgwick County offices will be closed on Thursday, November 28th and Friday, November 29th in observance of Thanksgiving. As always, emergency services are available by dialing or texting 911, and that's all I have for today.
Okay, very good. Makes me hungry thinking about that turkey.
That looked good, didn't it?
Yes, it did. Commissioners, any questions or comments to Nicole? Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Meitzner?
No, no, I was just learning my throat.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Nicole. Very good.
Of course.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Okay, seeing that no one has signed up for Public Agenda today, we'll continue to move forward. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, en banc meeting minutes of October 25th, 2024.
Okay, Commissioners, everyone who was present for this en banc meeting with the City of Wichita, any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, I'll move to approve the en banc meeting minutes of October 25th, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item B, proclamation declaring Small Business Saturday.
Okay, wonderful proclamation. I've asked Commissioner Dennis to read it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. This is a proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas, Sedgwick County celebrates our local small businesses and contributions that they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995. And small businesses employ 45.9% of employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community. And every dollar spent at small businesses create an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas, 59% of U.S. consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped or ate at small, independently-owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday in 2023. And whereas, Sedgwick County supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as organizations like the Wichita Independent Business Association, or WIBA, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2024 as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, celebrating its 15th year in 2024, and shop small throughout the year. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Move to approve.
I'll second the motion. Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And here to accept is our own Wendell Funk, President of WIBA, and he didn't have far to walk today to get over here.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate this proclamation and how you're honoring small business and Small Business Saturday. And on behalf of the Wichita Independent Business Association and our more than 700 small businesses, as well as our entire small business community, we just accept this proclamation, and we just wanted to take just a moment to just celebrate and the value of small business in our community and how it shapes our community. Just all of the entrepreneurs that are working hard to grow and scale and persevere, and the jobs, as you mentioned, that were added to our community, and just the impact. And so with this proclamation, we also celebrate as a community, to really wrap our arms around small business. And so we look to Small Business Saturday and encourage everyone to shop not only on Small Business Saturday, enjoy the local restaurants and shopping, but just to support small business all year round. And we really appreciate that, and we realize that, as you've mentioned, strong businesses build strong communities. And so thank you again for this proclamation. We accept it on behalf of the small business community and Small Business Saturday.
Very good. Wendell, thank you so much for what you do via WIBA. I know you have some WIBA folks that are here today. And I remember WIBA over a decade ago, and you said there's over 700 businesses in WIBA today. I remember when there was just about a dozen of us.
Yeah.
And it is remarkable what your organization has done to be a spokesperson for the small business community, to rally the small business community. There's such energy with WIBA and what you guys are doing. Congratulations on that.
Thank you. A lot of people involved in that, so.
I would also say that as someone who has made my living in small business the last 20 years, and as an entrepreneur, that the small business community is the engine that turns an economy. I'm very grateful for our big employers and the industries here that make Wichita and Sedgwick County their home and employ a lot of people. But the role of small business and the relationship small business has to its community is significant. So it means a lot to me that we're celebrating this proclamation and the work that you guys do at WIBA.
Well, thank you for all your support.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Wendell. I appreciate you being here today. Everyone's heard of Black Friday, but not everyone has heard about our Small Business Saturday. So I'm proud that I was able to read the proclamation so that we can get the word out to shop small businesses Saturday. Thank you.
Sounds great.
Very good. And Commissioner Meitzner and Commissioner Howell, since you don't have a button, just if you have anything, just acknowledge it, and we'll make sure we honor you. Okay, very good. Thank you, WIBA. Thank you, Wendell. Hold tight, because after our next proclamation, we're going to take a quick break and go out and get some pictures so we can celebrate. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, proclamation declaring National Adoption Month.
Okay. I'm taking the honor of reading this proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas, Sedgwick County believes, along with the nation, that foster children deserve safe, permanent, and loving families through adoption if they cannot safely return home. And whereas, the number of children in foster care has been increasing, and many of these children who are adopted have a better chance in life. And whereas, brothers and sisters who are separated in the foster care system yearn to be adopted by the same family. And whereas, Amber Hope Connections has helped adopt 52 foster children since July 2024. And whereas, Amber Hope Connections will be acknowledging November as National Adoption Month, and on Saturday, November 23rd, 2024, Amber Hope Connections will host an adoption celebration to celebrate the adoptions of 30 foster children by 20 families in November. And whereas, there are 75 foster youth still without an adoptive resource that are waiting to be adopted. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan K. Beatty, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 2024 as National Adoption Month here in Sedgwick County in the hopes that the people of this county will open their homes and adopt Kansas children from the foster care system. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I move to approve it as read.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And here to receive and accept this proclamation is Shannon Wilson. She's an Adoption Team 2 supervisor with Amber Hope Connections. Shannon, welcome. You and the team. We're glad you're here.
Hi, thank you, and good morning. So just on behalf of Amber Hope Connections, we want to thank you for adopting the proclamation. Also, in addition, on behalf of the children and families that we work with as well. National Adoption Day is always the Saturday before Thanksgiving nationwide. Amber Hope Connections, just with Sedgwick County alone, we've had over 50% of relatives adopt the children in Sedgwick County alone. Since July of 2024, since Amber Hope did take the contract over, we've had over 50 children adopted through Sedgwick County. On National Adoption Day, we do have 29 children being adopted with 19 families. What we're doing for National Adoption Day is we are having County Commissioner Ryan Beatty speak as well, in addition to Councilman Glasscock, in addition to some other community leaders in our community in Sedgwick County. We're also having face painting, some characters come, and we're also going to have a professional photographer come so that the families can have their first official family photo. National Adoption Day, it's such a joyous time, but it's also a day to raise awareness about adoption. We have over 75 children, just in Sedgwick County alone, waiting to find their forever family. Amber Hope Connections, so we can provide support for the families for up to six months post-finalization, and then after that, the state will take over for aftercare. So one of the other services that is provided in the state of Kansas is the Kansas Post Adoptive Resource Center. So they can help with parent education, support groups, and really just supporting those families with those children that do have trauma from the child welfare system. And if you would like more information on really just fostering and adopting in general, you can go to Amber Hope, our website on there, www.emberhope.org. So again, thank you so much for adopting the proclamation, and we will see you, Mr. Ryan Beatty, on Saturday.
Sure will, yeah. Hang tight, Shannon. Couple questions and comments. Anybody, Commissioners, any follow-up comments here? Commissioner Meitzner.
Ryan, I mean, Chairman, thank you. It's a special day, and you know, the birth of a child is always special. And but there's always an added background or an added event on the adoption of a child. And it's always a little bit of a story that's unique outside just everybody else having a great celebration of the birth of the child. Susie and I have, we adopted both of our son and our daughter, and they're now 28 and 29 years old. And it's been a happy life for us. So I have a special feeling about adoption, and so the Amber Group and everybody that helps be successful, it's very appreciated. So thanks for letting me say a few words.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I'll take the opportunity to say just a couple things briefly. I'm going to say a lot on Saturday. Well, you're giving me five minutes, but
Sorry.
We'll see how that works out. Listen, anytime a child has to enter the foster care system, the number one goal is safety of the child. But I think it's very important that we realize that anytime a child has to be put into the system, there's a lot of trauma involved with the child. And we know that anecdotally, but we know that by data. Data tells us the aftermath of children that have to come into care. Seventy percent of these kids will have a touch point in the criminal justice system. Only 40% are going to graduate high school. One out of four will become homeless before the age out after two years. And the ones that we're talking about today, the individual, these children in the foster care system, when the parental rights have been terminated, and now they're needing a permanent home, I would just say that what we're, this proclamation today and what we're trying to celebrate today and raise awareness for is the history of what led them to the moment of parental rights being terminated and the need for adoption, their history does not have to be their destiny. Commissioner Meitzner's story of his family is a wonderful testimony of what happens when adoption takes place and you can reset and recourse the direction of a child's life. There are 75 now here in Sedgwick County where this is the situation. in Sedgwick County where this is the situation, parental rights have been terminated, and they need adoption, they need a forever home. This is a wonderful opportunity. I implore the faith community, I implore people of this community to investigate this further and to see if there's an opportunity, if not just to, if not adoption, but to raise the awareness of the need for these children. So we work closely with Amber Hope. Thank you for all the work that you guys do. Your hearts are so in tune with these children and these families and trying to find forever homes. So we're going to celebrate on Saturday. We're going to celebrate Small Business Saturday. We're also going to celebrate this adoption, all these adoptions, and the story of these children and the opportunity they have for their forever home. So thank you for being here. Thank you for all that you do, and bless your work.
Thank you so much.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, we, these are two wonderful proclamations. We're going to pause for about five minutes. We're going to go out here in the foyer here and take some pictures, if that's okay. So give us five minutes. We'll be right back. Okay, we are back. Thank you for your patience on honoring Small Business Saturday proclamation and National Adoption Month proclamation. Wonderful times, wonderful organizations. So let's carry on. Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments, item D, accept the resignation of Brian Porter from the Sedgwick County 5th District Citizens Advisory Board.
County Counselor Justin Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item is a resignation of Brian Porter from Commissioner Howell's 5th District Citizens Advisory Board. The recommended action is to accept the resignation.
Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to thank Brian Porter for his service to Sedgwick County and to CAB 5. He is a, I had the desire for a military member having a McConnell Air Force Base in my district, and Brian is on active duty, but he's getting kind of busy and just doesn't have the time to continue doing that. Plus, I think he's nearing retirement. So he wanted to go and give me a heads up, and I sure just wanted to say, appreciate his service to Sedgwick County. He's very faithful and great experience to bring that to that board. So I just want to appreciate him so much. And I make a motion we would accept his resignation.
Okay, and I want to also thank Mr. Porter for his service, service and our military and service on this board. So I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meister? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
All right. Next item, please.
Item E, resolution appointing Patrick Palkowski to the Sedgwick County 5th District Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you. As the Madam Clerk indicated, this is a resolution to appoint Patrick Palkowski to Commissioner Howell's Citizens Advisory Board for District 5. This would be replace the position that Mr. Porter just resigned from. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, yeah, this will be appointed to the same board, however, in my mind, to replace a different position on that board. So I'm still going to be wanting to find someone from the military background. But Patrick Palkowski actually is an independent business owner, very well-known in the Derby area. And you'll see him at many receptions, different events around the community. He has a very successful business. And so he's, really brings a lot of business perspective to the CAB board. I want to say I appreciate his interest in serving this way. And Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, we adopt the proclamation to make this appointment to the CAB 5.
Very good. I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meister?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Next item, please.
Item F, resolution appointing David Everly to the Sedgwick County 4th District Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This resolution would appoint David Everly to Chairman's District 4 Citizens Advisory Board, which was recently expanded to add a couple positions, if I remember correctly, just in, I think, the last meeting. The recommended action on this is to adopt the resolution.
Yeah, very good. I very much appreciate David. Since the second I took office, he has engaged me, phone call, text message, email, shows up to CAB meetings. He very much wants to be involved and very much wants to have input in shaping some of the outcomes in our district. And anybody that has that sort of sincerity and energy, I want them at the table in these conversations. So it's with great honor that I will move to approve David Everly to join the District 4 Citizens Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meister?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. And David is not here. So County Clerk's office will reach out to these individuals and make sure that they get the paperwork signed. Next item, please.
Item G, resolution appointing Stacy Rogers to the Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board.
Very good. Commissioner Howell, honor roll today.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you for this chance to make this appointment today. Stacy Rogers is also a very successful business owner, and she has an interest in helping get involved in government policy opportunities. And so she has some personal experience with her family, with the IDDAB topic, if you will. She would be a really good appointment for this board, and so I am pleased to connect these dots. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion we would adopt the resolution to appoint Stacy Rogers to the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board.
Yes, proudly second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meister?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. And Stacy is here today. So if you'd like to come over, our County Clerk, Kelly Arnold is here, and he'll swear you in, and we'd invite you to say a couple things if you'd like.
I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. So, oh my God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you so much. Jim, thank you for the recommendation to be appointed for this. I appreciate it. I do have quite a bit of experience with this. I have two children who have disabilities. I've worked for 15 years with families together as parent match. So I felt when I heard that this was available, I reached out and said, this is something that's right up my alley. And so I really do appreciate this. I'm looking forward to working in this capacity. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Well, Stacy, thank you for being here and being willing to step up and serve. We have over 30 boards here at Sedgwick County Government. Anybody that steps into this space, you're serving your community in a big way. This one in particular, I know Commissioner Dennis talks about the ADD and the waitlist, and it's something that's near and dear to his heart, all of our hearts. So having your input there at the table, I think is going to be really important. It's also worth noting that you're also a small business owner, and I know you were here earlier with Saturday. So you do a lot in this community, and we're grateful for your willingness to step up once again and serve.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business, item H, PUD 2024-00014, Zone Change Request in the County from RR Rural Residential District to PUD Planned Unit Development Number 132 to Permit Outdoor Recreation Entertainment and Events Center in the County Located One Quarter Mile West of North 2nd Avenue and One Quarter Mile North of East 119th Street South.
Very impressive, Clerk. Before we get started, again, we're going to invite Scott Whittle to give us a brief summary as a reminder that we heard this item last week. We opened public hearing last week, closed public hearing last week, and we'll just read a quick briefing today, and then we'll ask for a motion. Before we get started, though, I think it's appropriate, since we're still, this is still a quasi legislative piece on our end, I think it's important that we declare any ex parte communication that we've had since last Wednesday, 11:13. So Commissioner Dennis, would you be willing to start?
Thank you. Well, prior to last Wednesday, I hadn't had any, but since last Wednesday, I have had ex parte contact and can still make a decision.
Yeah, myself as well. I had no ex parte communication prior to last Wednesday. Since last Wednesday, I've received some emails, had some conversations. I'm still open-minded and willing to make an open-minded decision on this case.
I've received some emails too, but that's all.
Okay, Commissioner Meister?
Yes, I've received a couple of email communications, but I've had no direct exchange of information back and forth. So, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, I have had, I've had numerous conversations since last week. I've had both proponents and opponents have reached out to me, and I have engaged those folks just to find out what their perspectives were. But again, I continue to, the information brought to us last Wednesday speak to my opinion on what needs to happen here today. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, very good. All right, that being said, Scott Whittle, take it away.
Yes, sir. So as you indicated, I'll provide a brief overview here, building off of what was done last week. So in this case, as you're familiar with, the applicant's request to rezone the property from rural residential to PUD Planned Unit Development, which is a custom zoning category. This item is being heard because there have been protests received against the application, there were public comments received at the MAPC meeting, and because it was deferred at the last county commission meeting. The staff report provides information about the application, including what's requested as part of the custom zoning, screening, land uses, parking, and also the context of this property. In addition, attached with the staff report is the text for the custom zoning district. So I would encourage folks to check that out if they've got questions about it. In terms of review, on September 26th, the Planning Commission, MAPC, held a public hearing for the item. The MAPC recommended approval of the request per the attached recommended PUD language. The vote was seven, two, and with one abstention. 16 members of the public spoke at that public hearing. Eleven members of the public were in favor of the application, five spoke in opposition. And you can see their comments in the notes as well as in the staff report. The Planning Commission, just a quick note that when they recommended approval of the PUD, they did so with a number of changes that are identified in the staff report and in the attachments. This is a red text in the PUD language. The Citizen Advisory Board for District 5 does not consider planning items. The subject site is located within the urban area of influence for the city of Mulvane. The Mulvane Planning Commission opted not to hear the case, which per the zoning code is a recommendation for approval of the application. Forty protests were received against this application. That added up to just over 20% of the protest area. It exceeds the state statute threshold of 20%. Therefore, if the Board of County Commissioners wish to approve the zone change request, it requires a supermajority of four or five votes. Alternatives, so in terms of recommended actions, recommend the county commission adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the zone change request. Again, requires four or five votes. Alternatives include you can override the MAPC recommendation, make alternative findings, and deny the application. That would also require four out of five votes. Or as always, you can return it to the MAPC with a simple majority and a statement specifying the basis for sending it back. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, the discussion is at the bench. Any questions for Scott? Okay, we had some pretty extensive conversation last week, so we'll move this thing forward. I'm happy to make a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a couple of comments first.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I apologize.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, sorry, Commissioner. I do want to make a couple of comments and just throw out some thoughts. And I apologize for interrupting you, Mr. Chairman. So I, last week, I was not really able to vote on this. I know this is fairly controversial. And I recently had surgery, had surgery last Tuesday, and because of my pain medications, I didn't feel like I should have a vote that might be questioned later on. I actually think I was doing, I did pretty well. But I want to let you know, I reviewed the meeting even after the meeting, and I've read everything that's been presented to me. I have all kinds of information on this case. And I've reviewed it. And I have not been on any pain meds now for a number of days. And so I have no reason why I should not be able to vote on this today. Once again, I want to also say, I mentioned a minute ago that I've had both opponents and proponents reach out to me, which is true. I just want to say that this is one of those things where there is no perfect answer. There's no way to make everybody happy. And that's why zoning cases are so difficult. Some of the opponents that reached out, they are extremely nice people. And I would desperately want to make them happy. Unfortunately, there's no way to make them happy. At the same time, also, I think, as a quasi judicial role, I'm looking for reasons that this can be opposed. And some of the things I'm reflecting on personally is the fact that they have an event center opportunity by right. To me, that is a very compelling point to be made. And I know there's some buildings that were constructed without proper permitting, but this actually cleans that up. Because with this today requires a plat and require, it will require those buildings to be brought up to commercial code according to our planning, or just say our MAPCD folks. So this takes care of that problem. Protest petition, the threshold, if you correct me if I'm wrong, was 20%, but this was 20.41%. So we're just barely over that threshold where it creates a supermajority by less than 1%. The fact that Mulvane City did not actually weigh in, to me, is a very compelling argument. This is right next to the city. One other thing I wanted to point out was, it came up at last week's meeting, and if I understand this better now, the city in Mulvane actually removed a sound ordinance that impacted the rodeo. And the rodeo, though, if you look at the picture there, the map that's on the screen right now, if you look just a little bit to the south, you'll see where the 119th Street is there. And then there's a curved road below that on the south side. That is 119th Street, really, it's Highway 53, but that road curves around. And between that curved road and the county line is a city public works area, plus also the rodeo grounds. And the rodeo grounds have had numerous, recently numerous concerts that go out seriously into like 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. And of course, this has no jurisdiction over that in any way whatsoever. But I wanted to point out in terms of, you know, point out in terms of, you know, something in the area that's going to make lots of noise, that's ongoing, and this has nothing to do with that, other than the fact that when people talk about concerts on this property, and the applicant talked about potentially four events a year where they would get into the later night, and he mentioned those, one of those was the Fourth of July for fireworks, a fireworks event. I would tell you that I think that in many ways, this actually protects some of the things that could happen on this property. So I have no, I don't have any concerns at this time. I really think that the concerns, the concerns that have been raised have been answered pretty well. Or the, well, I'll just say this, I don't know that I have a lot of concerns at this time. I'm trying to find any reason I can to, you know, to vote no on this, and I'm having trouble finding anything that's substantial here. I know that this unfortunately has been in operation for a while without the proper zoning, and the buildings were constructed without proper permitting, but all that's going to be fixed. And this cleans all that up and makes it where it's a, not doing it the right way. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't really have any concerns right now. I just wanted to share that I know to the opponents, I'm very, you know, I'm disappointed there's no way to actually make everybody happy on these cases, but that's the way that this generally works. So that's all my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good, Commissioner. And I'll make a motion, but I want to check and make sure there's no more questions or comments from the commission. Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Oh, he's ready to vote. Okay, seeing none, I move that we take the recommended action, which is to approve the zone change, follow M A P C recommendation, and override the protest petition.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes, and the zone change has been approved. Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, a resolution approving the issuance by the governing body of the city of Wichita, Kansas, of its taxable industrial revenue bonds to finance the cost of a wide-body hangar facility to be leased to Air Capital Flight Line LLC, which facility is located within an unincorporated area of the county.
Okay, Anisa Redd.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Anisa Redd with the Division of Finance. On November 5, the City of Wichita Council adopted a resolution to issue an industrial revenue bond not exceeding $12 million for the construction of a speculative maintenance, repair, and overhaul building. This spec building is located at 4174 South Oliver, which is located within the boundaries of the Aerospace Industrial District and will be eligible for significant property tax abatements. 95% abatement for the first five years and 50% abatement for the second five years, depending on occupancy. Based on the current mill levy, the estimated value of the 95% property tax abatement for the first full year is approximately $369,368. However, our independent fiscal analysis indicates a positive benefit to cost ratio for the county, which is 2.26 to 1, and for the fire district, 2.15 to 1. As this project is situated in an unincorporated area of the county, your approval is necessary for the city to issue the IRBs. We recommend that you adopt a resolution approving the issuance of an industrial revenue bond to finance the cost of a wide-body facility, which will be leased to Air Capital Flight Line. At this time, I'm now available to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you, Anisa. Appreciate the work you've done on this. Commissioners have been briefed and had conversations with staff on this. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question here.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I'm looking at the staff report. On page two of the staff report, it's talking about the financial considerations based on 2023 tax rates. The estimated value of the, of the tax for the first full year is approximately $369,000. And so, if I understand correctly, what this is trying to say is because of the IRB, we will not receive our portion, which is $83,000. And this is, what's the term of the IRB? Is it 20 years?
It's 10 years.
10 years?
Yes.
So am I correct in saying that for the first, for the 10 years, at least for the first year, again, that number will change over time, but for the first year, for example, we would not, we would forego the $84,000 for a building that currently does not exist?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and I assume that there is a but for, but for this IRB, they will not build this building. I don't know how else, how else they would say that. It's pretty customary for buildings of this size to have IRBs. I think the majority of buildings at the previous Boeing, now Spirit, and going back to Boeing, and Flatline site have been built with IRBs. And we have been, just in case we're not, we have not talked about this, but we have actually really encouraged the Greater Wichita Partnership and other companies around here to help us create an MRO. We've been, we've been pro, really pushing the idea of having a maintenance, repair, overhaul program in Wichita for a very long time. So really, this is a great news story that an MRO is, is going to be in Wichita. And with this IRB, there's going to be a new construction to be built, and they will have employees, I don't know if we have the employee information here, but the, this is a good news story. And of course, the return on investment is, according to this, it says it's 2.26 to 1, which means, again, in time, when this goes back on the tax rolls, there will be, I assume actually this ratio, maybe for that 10-year period, it will actually be higher than this after the 10 years, and correct me if I'm wrong, but between the wages being paid and other things going on there, there is actually a benefit to having this activity happen. So I know that $83,000 of tax forgiveness is, for 10 years, is a concern, but I also think there's a lot of benefit to having this done. At the end of the IRB, this does go on the tax roll. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
At the end of the IRB term, after the 10 years, this building ends up on the tax rolls?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah. So again, I think there's every reason to vote for this. I want to say thank you to whoever put this together. This is actually really good news for Wichita, and I appreciate having the, seeing the capital investment being made in Wichita, the way that they're doing this today. I'll be glad to vote yes on this. Thank you so much.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Howe had mentioned an MRO. Just for the public's awareness, this is a speculative maintenance, repair, and overhaul program, and it's for the development of a large air-filled hangar building. So this is a spec building. They do have a tenant, an LOI on a tenant. Is that correct? Or is this the only tenant that will be in this building, or is this specific, or there are more tenants that could come to this spec building?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brent Shelton, Deputy CFO. The tax abatements for this project are 95% tax abatement for the first five years, and then 50% for the second five years, if the building is occupied going into year six, because it's a speculative building. We don't know who's going to occupy it, but it helps make us more competitive as we're looking for those companies.
That makes sense.
It gives us inventory to sell.
Yeah, very good. That's good, that's good clarity. I appreciate that. So thank you. Okay, any other questions from the commission? Okay, I move to approve the recommended action. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Anisa. Appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, resolution to adopt the 2024 Kansas Homeland Security Region G Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay. My notes say that Julie Stimson is briefing, but it doesn't look like you're Julie. Is that right?
That is correct. I'm John Schrafter. I am the planner for emergency management, rather than the director. Julie is at a conference in Colorado Springs this week, but she's authorized me to present this before you. So as said, stated, we're seeking the adoption of the Kansas Region G Hazard Mitigation Plan. The mitigation plan is one of several plans that we maintain for the county, in addition to the local emergency operations plan, and other plans that fall under that umbrella. The mitigation plan really has two purposes. The first purpose is it's our hazard and risk identification for the county. A lot of our other plans actually refer back to this for the hazard, hazard and risk assessment. And the second, second purpose is that it provides sustained, sustained actions and recommendations for things that we can do to mitigate those risks, which in the, in the long term, opens us up to federal grants for mitigation actions. So the Hazard Mitigation Plan, a little bit of background, this is an update to the 2019 Hazard Mitigation Plan. Again, it's a regional plan. The State Department of Emergency Management oversees the develop, the building of this plan. It's renewed every five years. This is the second, second year, or second iteration that we've done a regional plan versus individual county plans. And as for adoption, this, this plan has already been approved by FEMA. It's gone through their review process. It complies with all of the federal regulations, FEMA guidance, Kansas Department of Emergency Management guidance. And it also, also complies with the Stafford Act and the, excuse me, Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. Going into this plan, a lot of resources were pulled, a lot of information was pulled from various resources, different jurisdictions, the State of, State of Kansas Hazard Mitigation Plan, as well as different flooding, flooding information, and land use plans. And we had several different organizations contribute their, their knowledge to the building of this plan. And then this slide here just is some of the recommended mitigation actions that we've, we've got going on in the county. There are a mixture of, of actions on this plan, some of them that are already in progress, such as our tornado siren replacement program, which is underway right now. Some of them have been identified and lack funding, such as a cleanup of Cowskin Creek to prevent flooding. And then there are some new, some new mitigation items for additional hazards that we've identified, such as the cyber threat. All right. And as I said before, adoption of this plan will open us up to the various hazard mitigation, mitigation grants available through FEMA. Four of them in particular, the Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities, Flood Mitigation Assistance, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Post Fire. Of note for this, we've already had some communities are interested in the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for possible construction of community safe shelters. And without, without the, an adopted plan, they will not be eligible for application for those grants. And I believe that's all the information that I have on this, pending any questions from, from you.
Okay, John, thank you. Commissioners, we've been briefed on this. Any questions or comments? Okay, I would just say, John, in the backup material, there's a link, and I would encourage the public to hit on that link. This document, this plan, mitigation plan, is over 300 pages. I mean, it is significant. This is a big lift by your staff. There it is. Yeah, you're holding it up now.
I brought a copy with me just to...
We won't ask you to read it. But over 21 municipalities participating, there's over 11 counties participating in this. And I would encourage people, if you go all the way to the bottom, you can see the feedback and the, and the actual mitigation actions that are in this plan by all these municipalities, by Sedgwick County. And I would just say that I'm very pleased, when you and I talked through this, that there's some conversations happening in mitigation actions about water and drought and some of these things. I think it's top of mind for a lot of people. And I see some of the actions in, in severe drought, if there was an emergency disaster with drought.
It really is a plan that needed to be updated.
Absolutely.
Especially the inclusion of the cyber, cyber threats that were not in the previous plan, and updating some of the, some of the new hazards, like you said, for drought and weather.
Yeah. Well, all that to say is this is a big lift, and you did a fantastic job, you and the staff. So thank you for all this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Commissioners, I move to approve the recommended action, which is to adopt the Kansas Homeland Security Region G Hazard Mitigation Plan. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye.
John, thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item K, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on November 14, 2024.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
And he's here. There he is, Joe Thomas. Welcome.
For the record, Joe Thomas, purchasing director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on November 14 has resulted in four items that we bring before you today. Our first one is the change order number two for organizational diversity and inclusion consultant for manager's office. This recommendation is to accept the contract modification for organizational inclusion consulting services with Hicks, Carter Hicks LLC, and that will go through the date of December 31, 2024, and it's in the amount of $9,550. Our second item is the bridge improvements. The project is B 547, and this is a deck overlay project for 375th Street West over the South Fork-Ninneska River, which is south of 47th Street South. And this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Don Linger and Sons Construction Company, and it's in the amount of $339,245.15. Our third item, Lake Afton Park, red brick toilet building replacement for both east and west for project services. And this recommendation is to accept the base bid from Conco Incorporated, and it's in the amount of $350,000 for the west building and $350,000 for the east building, making a total bid amount of $700,000. And our final item is change order number one for the architectural and engineering services for the mental health hospital for project services. And the recommendation is to approve this change order in the amount of $830,346. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay, Joe, thank you, and thanks for the work of the bid board on all these items. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Chairman, I have some questions and comments.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. So again, I'm trying to, I'm reading the background on item, I think it's item three, with the Lake Afton bathroom update, I guess. There's some questions about the showers. I'm not quite sure where it ended up. I don't understand the comments in the, in the writing, in the notes. Does this include replacement of the showers as well?
We're going to allow project services to provide you with some detailed information, I believe. She's on her way, Tanya?
Yep, she is, yes.
And just to be clear, it looks like they're, they're raising both of these buildings and replacing them with new brick and mortar buildings. And I guess the total cost is $700,000 roughly. Am I right about that?
Sandy Angelo, Project Services.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I was walking.
You're fine.
You may have to repeat that question if you don't mind.
Well, just to understand what's happening here, they're going to raise both of these buildings, I mean... buildings, I mean demolish them and replace them entirely, and these two buildings together is a total cost of around 700, it's a little more than $700,000, it looks like.
Correct.
And then they replace these, they're demolishing both toilets and showers, and what I'm wondering is, are they replacing the showers?
They are. That is correct.
They are. Okay. So it's basically a replacement of the entire building with the same function that's there currently.
Full replacement.
Curiously, was there any type of remodeling opportunity here? I mean, I don't know why they have to replace the entire building itself.
Yes, we looked at remodel, we looked at a prefabricated, and we also looked at the option that we chose, and they all were not within our budget. This one was.
Well, I do think this is better than a Portland portable that the city is talking about getting, so I'll support this item entirely then. But I would like to pull off item number one. Chairman, just to get started here, I'd like to make a motion, we would approve the Board of Bids and Contracts Recommendations for Items Two through Four, but I'd like to talk about number one separately. So Items Two through Four, I make a motion to approve.
Okay. To be clear, so we're going to pull off item one, and we're going to vote, I'll second the motion, but we're voting on Items Two, Three, and Four. So there's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, back to item one. Commissioner Howell?
Okay, so item one, again, it's not very substantial, it's $10,000, but it is a continuation, yeah, it's a continuation of our DEI program. This is additional consultation, which I don't know what there is to consult at this point. We're at the very end of this Carter and Hicks work with the county. I did take the DEI training, just for the record, to see what it was all about, and I have to agree with many of the employees who spoke up, and they were brave enough to tell me what they thought, but I have not had, most of the employees that reached out to me have said that they did not learn anything. It was, it was fine, it wasn't offensive necessarily, but they felt like it was not necessarily value-added. We have paid for employees to take off work, to actually pay them to attend this class if they weren't already on the clock. We have invested a huge amount of money, and for us to be at the end of 2024 and not have finished the course, they actually have to cost $10,000 more, I think is bad planning. I don't think we should continue this. It's time for us to do something different at this point. I would argue that, again, the DEI training, if I was to not try to use those words, because I can tell you, one of my takeaways of the class was a very intentional effort to use those words a lot. You could replace those words very simply by talking about respect and professionalism in the workplace, which is overarching. You know, our DEI program started, I think, generally in 2019, although in the community and around the world, it started maybe up to a decade earlier, but here in Sedgwick County, 2019 is when we kind of got moving in this direction here. And I've been, I'm 60 years old, and I've been to lots of different companies where they talk about employee behavior in the workplace, and it comes down to professionalism and respect to everyone we serve, both internal and external, our customers outside, and our fellow employees that we work alongside. We have to be professional and have respect towards everyone. And I think that's the takeaway, that this program does not provide anything new and different, and I think to continue to push these three words is political. I think we need to end it. This is $10,000 we don't need to spend, so, Mr. Chairman, I will not be supporting item number one. Thank you.
Okay. I'd invite either Tom or Tanya, can you give some clarity of what we're asking the consultant to do with this specific bid board item?
Chairman, I'll let Tanya go first.
Okay.
Good morning, Tony Paul, Assistant County Manager. So if you'd like, what I'd like to do is just get a little background on what you see in front of you. So one item that is not on there, that didn't show up on the table, is that we are extending the training materials until the end of November to make sure that we capture the ability for all the employees to be able to attend the training with the Hicks Carter Hicks materials. So that was given to us at no charge to be able to go through the end of November. The other two items that you see on there is some additional costs to work with Hicks Carter Hicks. The first item, let me hit, is just to provide one day of onsite consulting and facilitation with Hicks Carter Hicks. That is to allow them, one of the members of Hicks Carter Hicks, to work with the six new members that will be on the DEI council. So we had three folks that dropped off the DEI council because of two left employment with Sedgwick County, and one just said, this is just too much to take on with my workload. So three of those members are no longer with the DEI council we're replacing, and then we added three new members. So we have a total of 15 members that will be part of the DEI council. So we're asking Hicks Carter Hicks come back on, get the DEI council, these six new members, and the nine members that we already have on the DEI council, just for one day of consultation with the DI council. So that is what that $4,300 is for that one day of facilitation. The other additional 15 hours that you will see there is, and I think Commissioner Howell spoke to it greatly, is what we want to do is basically reframe and rebrand, because unfortunately, what we're seeing across the nation is that DEI, those words kind of have a negative connotation. So, and he is absolutely right. What we're doing is about respect, belonging, inclusion, working with your fellow colleagues at Sedgwick County. We're trying to push the mission and values of Sedgwick County, and it's also about serving our community. Same words, respect, belonging, inclusion, and that's what we're trying to do. And with Hicks Carter Hicks setting up their framework and infrastructure for our organization, we want them to continue and to help us work through that. And as well, they are going to help us, understanding that we do not longer have those training materials until the end of November. We want to continue this training moving forward for all new employees that come to the organization, so they're going to help us with moving those training materials forward, not necessarily with Hicks Carter Hicks training, but our own training materials. So they're going to help us to frame that, and again, not necessarily using those words, DEI, but that respect, belonging, inclusion words.
Tanya, would you mind if I ask, when you expressed to our consultant the desire that we might move away from using labels like DEI and things of that sort, what was their feedback to you on, from a professional consulting perspective? How did they advise you in that regard?
Yep, they basically said they're seeing this across the nation, they understand it, and they're going to help us work through that.
And so is this work here part of that, helping us navigate?
That is exactly what this work is, yep. And they basically said it is, and I mean, Commissioner Howell spoke to it greatly, it is about respect, it is about, you know, the belonging, it is about the inclusion, it's about the professionalism. He spoke to it greatly.
Okay. Very good. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have one other question, I guess.
Go ahead.
If we can break this down, I see there's two line items here, one's for the 15 hours of continuing the training for remaining employees, I guess, to the end of the year, but there's also this consulting. What I'm wondering is, if there was a dollar value that was tied to, if you will, conversion of this program to something that's not DEI, I might be willing to support that, but it's not broken down that way. So the way I see it right now, it says here, provide one day of onsite consulting and facilitation with the DEI committee, and this includes travel expenses, then provided additional 15 hours of consulting through the end of the year. And I guess this also gives us access to the curriculum that was developed, that most of the employees have had, basically mandatory training to have, I think was about a three-hour mandatory training for every employee. I'm not quite sure how many employees are left, but there can't be very many. So I don't know if this is broken, how this is broken down exactly. What portion of this $10,000, or $9,550, is going to be geared towards, if you will, rebranding or converting this program to something that's more about professionalism and respect in the workplace?
Commissioner Howell, that is the additional 15 hours of the DEI consulting. That's the 5,250 that we believe we'll be working with Hicks Carter Hicks to work on that reframing and rebranding piece. And just to understand, that's an additional 15 hours, we may not hit that 15 hours. We may be able to work through that in five or six hours with Hicks Carter Hicks. That's just a maximum.
I'll just say, thank you for that answer. As it's currently packaged, I can't support this today. Thank you.
Okay. I would just say, let me give some thought to this, is what I think's happening here. The conversation about rebranding, let me back up even a step further. The DEI work here started in 2019, correct? 2018, 2019 time period?
Correct.
In the program. The conversation around DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion across the country has changed dramatically, significantly. We started talking six months ago about, hey, how do we evolve? How do we pivot? How do we make sure that the principles that we want to make sure are embedded in the organization, the 2,800 employees of Sedgwick County Government, that we want our workforce to be a byproduct of the community that we serve, that we want employees in this organization to feel welcome, we want them to feel like their voices are heard, we want respect, we want and value merit, and experience, and integrity, and intelligence. How do we rebrand this so that we don't get the program that the manager's office is advocating for, lost in the shuffle of the national political debate? We didn't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I will say, and I've said publicly multiple times, that I will not support any sort of programming that is based on, that makes hiring or promotion decisions based on quotas, or gender, or racial, or any of that sort. That's not what we do here at Sedgwick County Government. That's not what this program was ever about at Sedgwick County Government. So I'm fully supportive of finishing the pivot and the evolution so that we have something here at Sedgwick County of attracting and retaining our workforce that is representative of the actual work that we're doing here and the value that we place on our employees. So that pivot is happening right now. This rebranding of what it is is happening right now. The manager's office is deeply involved. I've sat alongside Commissioner Lopez and talked to this council and heard their feedback, and I want to stay the course to get something on the end of this. After the DEI work is, and this contract is complete, what I'm hopeful for and what I want to support is something on the backside of this that is representative of the work that we actually do here, and get it out of this, whatever other organizations are doing nationally, I want it to be uniquely what we do here at Sedgwick County that values our staff. I want the staff to hear that clearly from me, that the positive things that we want to do, we want to anchor into those things and make sure that we have a workforce that understands our heart here. So the quicker that we can make this pivot, I think the better, because I think our workforce needs that clarity. And I think, you know, as a large employer in this community, I think we need to be a signal to our constituents and to this community that the direction that we're heading. So, but I understand what's happening here. I do understand, I don't want to get lost in the fray of DEI and these three words that seem to have this political connotation right now, for some reasons that are justified and other reasons here that aren't. Some of the things that people are afraid of aren't happening in Sedgwick County Government. They are not happening at Sedgwick County Government. It isn't. So I can't be any more forceful that it's not hap, some of the things people are afraid of on the racial quotas and the gender quotas and those things, they do not happen here, and I would not support those things. So I appreciate the leadership from the manager's office, and I appreciate the pivot, and I appreciate the commitment to our workforce. They need to know how much we care about attracting, retaining, and having a healthy work environment. So other questions or comments on this? Okay, we're just on item one.
I probably apologize.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up, one thing I was really disappointed in, the DEI class that I did take, it seemed to really lack an effort to talk about respect and professionalism. Those words, I think, were not words that came up, if at all, during that three hours with the training. And I'm just disappointed in the curriculum. I don't know that it's right for Sedgwick County. I know there's an effort that says that, you know, diversity, as it's been defined by DEI promoters, is something that we are trying to create diversity, and I agree with your comments, that our diversity is, if someone wants to work at Sedgwick County, we have positions open, and they're qualified for those positions, we're going to, we want to hire them. I don't care what, I don't care what their race, or accent, or color of their skin, or their family situation, it doesn't matter to me, as long as they can do that job, we want to hire them. And we've been good at that. So diversity, in terms of hiring and promotion, I think, has been, has essentially been colorblind to those adjectives. We've promoted, we've hired the people that are qualified and promoted those that are able to take on more responsibility. So I think Sedgwick County, in reality, has done a really good job, I would call it natural diversity. But the idea that diversity is something we have to, you know, change our decisions to create diversity is the underlying problem of this. Equity says you treat everyone, you know, with, and again, they go out of their way to make a point about equity is equality, and I disagree. Equity, I think, is focused on outcomes, where equality says we treat everyone the same. We don't give someone preference because of, again, their idea is disadvantaged folks need to have extra help, and I don't know that I agree with that. We should treat everyone with equality, and there's the word, and we're under law, under the EEOC, to embrace equality in our hiring and treatment of our employees. Equality is the word we should be using, not equity. So I disagree with that. And inclusion, once again, the idea that we would exclude someone based on some kind of character trait, to me is offensive. We've never done that. And the whole premise of DEI, as it's been taught, in my opinion, is false. We have to embrace professionalism, respect, and equality in the workplace, but DEI never used those words. It uses different words, and I disagree with it. I think it's time to say it's a failed program, and we can do better, and I would say we should invest money in orientation and retraining of employees to embrace the qualities of respect, professionalism, and equality in the workplace, both as people come onboard and as they perform their jobs in Sedgwick County. But the DEI program is a failed experiment. We did not check boxes that were good for Sedgwick County. It's time to end it, and this is $10,000 roughly that we don't have to spend. I don't, I know it seems like not a lot of money, but it's still nearly $10,000, and I think we can spend this money in better ways. I would rather see this money used for a more appropriate program. I don't know, I'm not sure that Carter Hicks is the right company to do, to lead us in that direction. I would like to end this today. Thank you so much.
Okay. Tanya, you've heard thoughts, and you'll be able to relay some of this information back, and we'll continue these conversations. These conversations are continuing, so, okay. Appreciate that. Madam Clerk, I move to approve item one of the bid board.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Joe, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Okay, Manager Stolz.
Chairman of Commission, good morning. Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items L through Z on the general agenda today.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions on the items of the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve consent agenda, items L through Z.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Let's pause for one moment. We're going to push pause on the Board of County Commission meeting and convene the governing body of Fire District Number One. I'll call this meeting to order for Wednesday, November 20th, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
Public Agenda.
Okay, no one has signed up to address the commission on, or the fire board on the public agenda? Next item, please.
No business. Item A, Resolution to Adopt the 2024 Kansas Homeland Security Region G Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay, Commissioners, this is the same line item that we just went through, that John had presented. Same thing applies not only for the County Commission, but also for the Fire District. So there should be no questions. I think we've hammered everything out on this. So I'll move to approve the recommended action to adopt the Kansas Homeland Security Region G Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
A motion. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Commissioners, we're under the Fire District Number One. Anything under other? Seeing none, next item.
Executive Session.
We have no executive session for the Fire District. So, I'll officially adjourn the meeting of the governing body of Fire District Number One and return us back to the Board of County Commission. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee Reports.
Okay, commissioners, do we have any committee reports you'd like to share?
Mr. Chairman, just, I am remote, but I am, I'm on the committee, one of the state representatives in the Midwest Interstate Passenger Rail Commission, and we all, 10 states are together here in Minneapolis-St. Paul, and it's been some great meetings and some updates. I want to congratulate, KDOT is here as well, and Senator McGinn, representing the State Senate. I want to congratulate KDOT on their successful, successfully being awarded the ID, the corridor ID program. It's a major step forward in the, in this, connecting the Heartland Flyer from Oklahoma City up through Wichita and Newton. And so, that ball is rolling in a very positive way, and all 10 of these states up here are very supportive of that. Oklahoma is not part of this compact, but it's going well. And as I finish it up, I'll report back to the Transportation Coalition and to WAMPO and others, and, you know, obviously, sometimes, sometimes the media and the public are interested in this, so I think the newsletter that we're going to do with our communications team will probably, maybe I have to do, I'll copy what you do, Chairman, maybe a verbal video, the summary of that might be best, so we continue to move forward with that. So, thanks for letting me report from Minneapolis-St. Paul.
Very good. Well, we appreciate the work you're doing up there, Commissioner. Excited to hear briefing when you return home. Commissioners, anything else under committee reports? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Anything under other? Okay. Next item, please.
Executive Session.
We have no executive session for the Board of County Commissioner meeting today. It is 10:23, and it looks like our business is wrapped up. Anything else need to come before the commission? Are you counting down meetings?[1769.33]